New Oak Hill General Baptist Church remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Susan McVeigh.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for our country. We thank you for your leadings, of your guidance, of your Holy Spirit. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that we invite you into this meeting tonight, dear Lord, that you would just guide and lead the directors of our city and control our minds, Heavenly Father, lead our hearts, that we may settle the matters that may be discussed at tonight, Heavenly Father. And we know without your leadings and guidance, a lot of times, we can't accomplish things. But we thank you for your peace that you give us and your guidance that you do give us. We just pray, Heavenly Father, that you'll bring us together in one mind and one accord, that you will be in the midst for your leadings. Bless the council. We just want to give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McVeigh.
Here.
And Mayor McGee.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, on citizen's input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. None. At this time, proclamations and awards. Daniel Holt from Missouri Rural Services Corporation will present an award to Municipal Utilities General Manager Bill Bach for outstanding achievement in minimum workman's compensation claim through municipal utilities. If you'd just give us your name and address, please, sir.
All right. Dan Holt with Missouri Rural Services. I live in Sedalia, Missouri. So, I've got some handouts. I'll just let you guys pass these around in a brief order on your time, and I'll make it very brief. So, I'm here on behalf of Missouri Rural Services Work Comp Insurance Trust. You guys are members and partial owners of the program. The utilities has been in there, been in the program since 2003, 2004. And just to show you how things have worked, we started working with Bill with our loss control at that time. And in 2003, 2004, with a $3.5 million payroll, you guys' premium was, or the municipal utilities was $280, almost $285,000. This year, we're running about $93,000, so about $190,000 less than premium than the year you started, so very substantial savings. And because of that, we have what we call the Hall of Fame Awards. Any account that has $10,000 more than premium with 35 percent loss ratio for a three-year period or less earns what we call a Hall of Fame Award. And... Bill, you want to come up? ...will present that.
You'll read? Thank you.
[inaudible]
Thank you very much. We'll under the consent agenda.
Wonderful.
The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council review bids received for professional demolition and land clearance services and asbestos abatement services relative to the flood buyout project. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, I'm going to defer to Camille Donnell, who is the administrator of the flood buyout project for the city. If you do have a specific question for me, I'd be glad to answer it, but I would like for her to present Ozark Foothills' perspective of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Camille Donnell, the grant administrator from Ozark Foothills. And we opened bids on Wednesday for the demolition of 10 properties that have been purchased so far with the flood buyout. The apparent low bidder is Dornan Demolition. They were well within budget, and the bids, I believe, are in there for you to review. Are there any specific questions about the bids that were received? There will be seven, I believe, six or seven more. We've closed on 10 so far, so we went ahead and did demo bids for those, and then we'll do a second round for the final seven.
Thank you.
This is just for clarity, from council's perspective. We're forced to take the lowest bid, right, Mark? I'm asking him.
Yes, I think that's correct with CDBG funds.
No other questions? There entertained a motion second to move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, City Council review adjustments to the fiscal year 2017 budget for the city of Popper Bluff.
Mr. Mayor, has that be tabled until the next meeting? That would give us one more report of sales tax and most expenditures. I have listed, or actually, most of them are year-end expenditures. I would just ask that be tabled.
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Second.
Motion second to table item B to the workshop section on September 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will discuss repealing ordinance number 7612 relative to the purchasing policy of the city of Popper Bluff.
Yes, this is a purchasing policy. It was passed in 2015 under the previous administration. I had previously told you in the manager's report that it did not repeal the old ordinance. It actually did, but the ordinance never came out of the ordinance book. The one passed in 2015 is 25 pages long. It's very cumbersome and hard for people to understand. So I'm recommending we use the old purchasing ordinance with a few changes. Under Section 140.030, under competitive bidding, competitive bidding, I recommend changing the threshold to $15,000. The policy passed in 2015 was $25,000. I do understand some of you would like to take it back to $10,000. That's perfectly fine, or whatever amount you would like to do. Under Section 140.040, purchasing procedures, leave number one, but change to read $1,500 instead of $500, which is what's in the 15 purchasing policy. Leave number two to read $1,500 instead of $500. Add a paragraph, new paragraph number three requiring informal quotes for the amounts of $1,500 to $2,999.99. Add a new paragraph number four requiring three formal written quotes for the amounts of $3,000 to $14,999 or any other amount you might choose. And adding paragraph number five explaining the bidding process for purchases of $15,000 or more, or whatever amount you choose. And then add a new section entitled Emergency Purchases. And at the end of that, any emergency purchase of a utility department would be approved by the utility manager, and any emergency purchase by any other fund would be approved by the city manager.
Would this still have the percent for local bidders?
Yes, nothing else in the ordinance would change, just these changes.
Mr. Mayor, do you remember what year that this was? Or, Mark, do you remember what year this ordinance was in place?
I don't. It's several years old.
It doesn't have that on here.
The original one?
Uh-huh. Those pages are not a part of this.
I think it was 19, it'd been amended since then, so I'm not going to say 1985.
I would like to see all of the parts before we make a decision on this, not just these snippets of paragraphs. I know we could move it on if you all want to, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but we just received some of the information tonight, and there's a lot of parts to absorb, especially when we don't have the old one to compare it with and where we're going with. I'm sure you've researched it, but we just haven't had a chance to look at it, and I'm not comfortable with moving it on, I don't think. Does anyone else feel that way?
I'd say they agree with you.
You want to workshop it again at the next meeting?
Workshop it again next meeting. I would like to do that, just because we've gotten so much new information and just had a very few hours to look it over. Plus, I've got, I'd like to lay that in its entirety with this before I, you know, look at it, to make a decision on.
Okay. Motion in a second to move this to vote to the workshop session on September 5th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will discuss options for the city hall. I'm asking him.
Yeah, first, I just wanted to kind of give a brief history of what's happened on this subject. Under the previous administration, a committee was set up to make a recommendation to the council on where City Hall Police Station should be located. The committee was not given a chance to make a formal recommendation, but it was discussed in their meetings that they thought City Hall should be located downtown, and it didn't really matter to them where the police department was located. On August 1st of last year, I read a statement at the council meeting stating I thought City Hall Police Station should be located at the 101 Oak Street location. The council had a verbal vote that evening, and it was unanimous to authorize me to proceed with the project as described. On November 7th of last year, the council voted unanimously to contract with Dillian Traxel as the architect for this project. In February this year, it was brought to our attention that a building that had been previously considered for this project had a considerable reduction in the original asking price. At this point, we put the original project on hold. This building has been discussed in closed session for the last several months, and negotiations for purchase price have taken place. The building I'm referring to is the Northwest Medical Clinic located on Barron Road. The council and I are very concerned on the amount that we should spend on this project, and that is why it was felt we should explore other options before we had spent money on design. We want to, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. There is no way we can have solid figures on what a brand-new building would cost versus renovating the clinic building unless we do pay the architect to do design study. The square footage of the clinic building is approximately 70,000 square feet. The negotiated cost of the clinic building has been set to $3,495,000, or approximately $48 a square foot. The estimate for complete renovation of the clinic building without municipal utilities is approximately $4,300,000 for a total combined square footage cost of $106 a square foot. My personal opinion is we could renovate this building for less than $4,300,000. The cost estimate for a brand-new building is anywhere from $150 to $175 per square foot. A new building would need to be approximately 50,000 square feet, which would put the cost between 7.5 million and 8.75 million. Once again, I think it could be done for less. I've talked to several people about this item. Some told me it needed to be downtown. Some told me Northwest Clinic would be better than downtown, and some people told me they really didn't care where it went. I know the council would like to discuss this, and there are people in the audience that would also like to discuss it, so I will stop there and just kind of leave it where it's at and let you all start.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to address it? If you come to the podium, I need you to give your name, address, and try to keep your comments to 10 minutes, please.
They're asking that you go ahead and discuss this, and then we'll discuss it, I guess, as we're doing.
Well, that's, you direct it.
We'd like to hear what they have to say.
Well, we will.
I'm going to go ahead.
Okay.
This might be easiest, because I'm Robert Smith. I live at 501 North Fifth Street, Popper Bluff, Missouri. I work downtown in 502 Vine Street, Suite 2, in the old Anderson Montgomery Ward Building. That was a surprise to me. When we, when I moved in, I found out that it was before Anderson Furniture, where I used to buy my furniture, it was Montgomery Ward. So that was, that's some history. And that's what my theme would be tonight, and before we all discuss it, and I think I should like to lay the groundwork, what I feel is important is history. You know, I think the history of Popper Bluff is something to keep and to, you know, and honor. I think the brick streets. I think the old postal office that had been destroyed and turned into a parking lot would have been a great addition to that. And we're now at another turning point, where are we going to put the city hall? You know, are we going to just let, you know, the city hall, city downtown, city just pass into nothingness? I think, I think there's a chance still to revive it. I think we've got a good director of the Downtown Corporation. I think she's got some good ideas. Saint Vincent de Paul did finish that one building downtown by the skate park, and I think it looks good. And I think there's a slow, but sure, we can still achieve it to a point that, you know, it's still a thriving little downtown again. But if we deserted the city hall, the city government deserts and goes down to Nyberg Clinic, I mean, not Nyberg Clinic, but the Northwest down there on Barron Road, there will be no city center. I mean, that's not, that's not center of anything down there. You know, the whole hospital's been abandoned almost, and so we'd be moving the, off, you know, city hall down to another section that would be, would achieve no unity for the city. I think that's what we have to think about, is what we're going to hand down to our children. You know, we've got the city, we've got the, we've got the train station, and I think we're on the cusp if we keep the city hall down, I think we can regain the town, for sure. I think it's going to take some hard work. But I think where we've gone is we're doing, joining this downtown organization, that's nationwide. We've got some good ideals, but we do this one building at a time, and I think we can do it. But if the city government bans downtown, then we, I think, have written this obituary for it. It's going to die. I think there'll, you know, there'll be less reason to go downtown. I think to have the courthouse, the city government library, we got the jail, and I think the police department should stay down here, too. I think this right here would be redone to include all of that and keep the community down here, I think. So, I just say, let's don't turn our back on history like we did when we tore down the postal office. You know, 10 years from now, after we, if we abandoned downtown, they're going to say, "Well, that's another mistake we made." I'm asking you to give serious consideration to remaining downtown, and let's preserve the history and what we have downtown. I think it's something that we should pass on to our children.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Jerika Fox, 501 Vine Street. Okay, so, first, I wanted to start out with, a few of my board members approached me a few months ago, because, as everyone knows, talk has went around town that city, you know, has been looking at alternate locations other than downtown. So they asked me to prepare a petition. I spoke with Pam. It's not, it was just one that we wanted to send out just to get a rough idea, just from our downtown area of those that visit it, what they thought about moving out. So our petition states, I don't know if any of you have seen it or not, it just says, "We, the citizens of the city of Popper Bluff, petition the city council and ask that City Hall remain in downtown Popper Bluff, Missouri. Ask for their name, signature, address, and phone number." We got approximately 300 signatures in just a few short weeks, and that was just out of two of our businesses in downtown. So, out of two businesses, over 300 signatures in less than a few weeks. So I think that speaks volumes in itself. Being a previous council member, I sat where you are exactly one year ago, as Mark stated. I recall being the second to a motion in which we said keeping downtown was what we chose. Every one of us unanimously said, "This is what we want." Several months later, we gave Mark the permission to work with Dillian Traxel to begin working on studies and plans for a design of a new city hall. I know Mark's kind of already stated it, but I'd really like to reiterate, why are we doing this again one year later? So, yes, to save money. However, we've wasted a year's money. He's already done designs for us and studies on this building. So, had it been six months later and Northwest came to us and we'd already designed plans, and because it's that much cheaper, would we have just stopped and said, "Okay, we've spent this much money, but it's that much cheaper"? I feel like we're just spinning in circles. And I felt like that's where we were a year ago, and so now, you know, over a year later, that's still where you all are at. And I don't understand why. I feel like there could have been, you know, a lot further at this point. This is where our town began, on Black River. This is where our courthouse and jail reside, and this is our heritage, just as Robert stated. As many of you know, I believe you were all invited, our organization joined Missouri Main Street Connection out of Branson, Missouri, and just recently, National Main Street came and did a workshop with us. They've stated in every single meeting of mine and every local workshop that they provided that there's no other place like downtown Popper Bluff. There's no other place like downtown Cape Girardeau. There's no other downtown Popper Bluff. Anytime a city or county pulls from its downtown, it displays a lack of interest and per se turning their backs on their city. Our organization is working very diligently on revitalizing our district. It doesn't happen overnight, but we feel in the last year that we've accomplished a lot. We're working on providing public restrooms to our downtown area, hopefully by the end of the year, opening a local dog park. We ask that you please keep all of these things in mind as you make your decision. We own this land, and as previously stated, we have already had a committee and a council make this decision once. Why should we do it again?
Thank you.
I'm Phyllis Baker, 3500 Marble Hill Road. Mark, you spoke very efficiently, but quickly.
Yes, I did.
So I was trying hard to take notes, but I can't write that fast. You would renovate a 70,000-square-foot building?
Yes, the building is 73,000 square feet.
78. What size is a...
73, 78, something like that.
What size would have, would the, were the drawings proposed to be for downtown?
We don't have drawings for downtown. They were just estimating square footage prices.
What approximate square footage would a downtown...
We estimated around 50,000 square feet.
And, so, it sounded to me like to renovate the 73,000 combined to buy it and to renovate, it would be $106 a square foot?
Yes.
But to build a new building, it would be $175 a square foot?
We, you know, we've been told 150 to 175. Of course, you never really know until bids actually come in.
But the square footage would be less?
Yes, it would be.
So, when, you've probably done the math. I don't have a calculator up here. What is the price difference between old and new?
Actually, I didn't write that down.
How much are we talking about?
I'll configure that. Phyllis, my figures are right at $1,000,985 with the figures I've used.
That's what I put on everyone that night. $985,000. Approximately, about 2 million.
No, 900, I'm sorry. 9, a little...
Less than a million.
Less than a million, 985,000.
Less than a million.
Close, close to it.
Have you factored if, well...
I'd ask for order in the body, please.
So, do you, do you need 73,000 square feet? What will you do with it?
No, it's been discussed that we could actually lease some of that space out to somebody else.
Will the medical facility, any part of that, still be there?
No. And, I mean...
We haven't decided.
Yeah, we really haven't decided. I mean, there's some that would like to stay. They could actually lease some of that if that's what we decided, if we went that direction.
Have you factored in the residential neighborhood that that building is located in? There was a big discussion about Barron Road, oh, last month?
Yes.
That had been carried on for several months. Am I right? Barron Road is a hot topic. So, did that factor, is that factoring into your all's decisions? Barron Road.
Sir, it's been a part of discussion, yes.
Okay. Is everybody shaking their head, yes? Yes, yes?
Yes, it is.
Everybody's taking into consideration that Barron Road is a residential neighborhood that you were reluctant to change coating on. You realize that? And this building's already zoned properly. Exactly. There would be no zoning change. So, are all of you familiar with Turnaround Downtown? I'm going to look at everybody. Yes, okay. So that was a pretty extensive project, and many of you were part of it. Do you have a comment about Turnaround Downtown and the location of City Hall? Am I allowed to ask, or?
Sure.
No, or? Anybody have a comment about Turnaround Downtown and then move City Hall to a residential street in Popper Bluff? Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment about that?
I think it'll stay downtown, in my opinion.
Mrs. McVeigh, do you have a comment?
I'm looking at the taxpayers' money. Since the use tax didn't pass, we are definitely really on tight budget, and I'm looking to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money by not spending as much. I'm not sure how much economic value that the city hall brings to downtown. I'm a huge supporter of downtown. I'm, my past is from the Dunn Hotel, family members, Woolsworth. I mean, I've got a lot of history in downtown Popper Bluff, but city hall is not something that brings a lot of economic value, where this strip of land could be turned into something that would bring something more viable to downtown. Should we be able to make a switch to move it away from here? It seemed to be very successful for the utilities when they moved away from here, and I was not a part of the council then, and I've been researching to find out who was a part and was that opposed. I haven't found out any opposition to that. So, but I'm just, I'm just looking at economics. That's really the bottom line.
So do I, but part of your decision-making would be that you think if it moved, if City Hall moved to Barron Road, that would be an economic boost?
No, I'm thinking that the city hall being built here is not an economic boost. Being built here or not being built here makes no economic difference. Had, does it move, there is a possibility that this could become an economic boost. You could turn this into something that would bring life to downtown.
This, this location...
This very location.
May have a different life to it.
Yes. And, and the parking garage and the land that we own right through here, yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Look at the ward I represent. I definitely think City Hall needs to be downtown. I think it is a boost to the community. This is a historical heart of the community, and I'm all for it here.
Councilwoman, Councilman Crocker.
No, it's Councilman Crocker. I'll be honest with everybody here, I don't like either option. I've got 38,000 square feet probably, or 35,000 square feet probably, at the Northwest Medical Building that we're not going to use. We don't know what we're going to do with it. I don't like the fact that we are going to build another six and a half, seven and a half million-dollar building downtown. I can appreciate all the efforts that people are doing here for the downtown organization. I support, I come down to Jim and Jerry's every Saturday, eat the gumbo, best gumbo in town. Problem is, though, I've asked several businesses when I'm out in public, "Where do you want the city hall to go?" They all tell me, well, some tell me I don't care, some say downtown, some say Northwest Medical. The one thing I ask them, "Okay, if you want it downtown, are you following me?" No, I won't relocate downtown. It's not a good business move for me. And so, the one thing I can see that the downtown has the potential for the city hall to be is because nobody wants to be here. And this would be the perfect spot for a building that doesn't have...
This, this location...
This very location.
May have a different life to it.
Yes, and, and the parking garage and the land that we own right through here, yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Look at the ward I represent. I definitely think City Hall needs to be downtown. I think it is a boost to the community. This is a historical heart of the community, and I'm all for it here.
Councilwoman, Councilman Crocker.
No, it's Councilman Crocker. I'll be honest with everybody here, I don't like either option. I've got 38,000 square feet probably, or 35,000 square feet probably, at the Northwest Medical Building that we're not going to use. We don't know what we're going to do with it. I don't like the fact that we are going to build another six and a half, seven and a half million dollar building downtown. I can appreciate all the efforts that people are doing here for the downtown organization. I support, I come down to Jim and Jerry's every Saturday, eat the gumbo, best gumbo in town. Problem is, though, I've asked several businesses when I'm out in public, where do you want the City Hall to go? They all tell me, well, some tell me I don't care, some say downtown, some say Northwest Medical. The one thing I ask them, okay, if you're wanting downtown, are you following me? No, I won't relocate downtown. It's not a good business move for me. And so, the one thing I can see that the downtown has the potential for the City Hall to be is because nobody wants to be here. And this would be the perfect spot for a building that doesn't have any, doesn't bring any economic value into the city, so that we're not wasting commercial space out there. I can see that for being the downtown side. That's a positive for it, because nobody wants to be here. Now, I hope you guys are successful with the downtown, transition downtown, whatever it's called. Hope it works. It's been 30 years, and I don't think it's coming back, not the way we used to think it was going to be. Woolworth isn't coming back. Walmart's not coming down here. Menards won't be here, neither will Home Depot. It may be in a different version. Downtown might be a different version that we have to think about, but I don't think it's going to be the economic thing that, that some of the people in this room may think it's going to be. I hope I'm wrong. But when you drive downtown here on a Saturday afternoon, you don't have to worry about parking. There's nothing here. And I don't know how City Hall is going to change that. It doesn't bring any economic value, doesn't generate revenue, but it also doesn't take up a space that does generate revenue. Northwest Medical generates revenue for the city now, from property taxes. We don't have to pay the utility bill for City Hall. It right now would pay the municipal utilities. Everybody that's in that suite would pay for it. If we move in there, the utility department would have to take over the expense. I'm still on the fence, to be honest with everybody in this room. I don't know where I'm going to go. I have to look at every option from a dollars and cents standpoint and make the best decision possible for the taxpayer money. I have to take emotions out of it. I have to take that because of the fact that our sales tax revenue was either stagnant or going down. With our internet sales that did not pass, it's going to hurt us. It's just going to hurt us more in the future. The 200,000 this year is just a drop in the bucket. In five to 10 years, we're still paying on that note for debt, for whatever City Hall we have. It's going to be from a lower sales tax revenue percentage than what we have now unless things change. And so, I have to think about all those factors before I place my vote, and I'm still not sure where I'm going, and that's the honest truth.
Ms. Baker, you just have two minutes left.
Councilman Smith?
I definitely think it should be downtown. The way I feel, if the city packs up and leaves downtown, why should anyone else even attempt to come here or even attempt to revitalize it? So, I think it would be a deadly blow, the last nail in the coffin, if the city packs up and leaves. So, I definitely think they should stay downtown.
Councilman Davis?
I don't think we should hang our head on, on everything, on, on keeping City Hall downtown. And I, I don't want to take away from the endeavors of the downtown, PB Downtown. In fact, I'm on the board. I was placed on there, assigned by the mayor, and I'm glad to be on that. I think there's a lot of things that can be done to promote that. I think that's a worthy, worthy project, worthy endeavor, I think, as a, as a councilman and as a citizen. We should do everything we can to, to promote downtown and, and to put energy into that. I think there's some things that can be done, but I do not think that City Hall is, is, is going to put, just the facility being here is going to put life into downtown. And I don't think that, you know, downtown is never going to be what it was in 1950s. In regards to Mr., Mr. Smith's comments earlier regarding the historical aspect of it, you know, history is a matter of evolution. Everything evolves. Everything that evolves becomes history. If it doesn't, if it doesn't evolve, you know, it's stagnant. And I feel like as a community, as a city, that we need to go forward. That was part of my pledge when I ran. I've been on the council for five months, and I'm learning lots of things. I want to learn a lot more. I want to be productive as a councilman. But the city is moving forward, and we, I feel like we need to be, move forward. And, and, and I think things can happen in downtown, things need to, but I think we need to move forward as a community, and lots of things are happening out north. There's a lot of people in downtown, but there's a lot of people and a lot of businesses elsewhere, too. Popper Bluff is just not about a few people in downtown. It's about people in South Popper Bluff, it's about people in West Popper Bluff, it's about people in North Popper Bluff, East Popper Bluff. I've talked to over a dozen people, and they have other views as well, and a great many of those don't feel like we should put six to eight million dollars in a facility downtown.
Okay. Ms. Baker, your time is up. Thank you.
May I respond to it since the rest of them have?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I think I owe it to you and to everybody, yeah. My decision is really a, I try to make it a business decision. And downtown, like many have said, I remember going to Penny's and getting my first stuff for boy, for Cub Scouts downtown, yes. So, I have shared all of that with many of the rest of you, those kinds of things, and it does have sentimental value, too. But at this point in my responsibility, I, I don't believe I'm responsible to, for sentimental value, but for using the taxpayers' dollars the best that we can. And in the figures I have used, which are subject to discussion or for clarification, some of those with, with the architectural firm, however, they are figures that have at, at one time I have captured from the architectural firm. It appears to me, in the work that I have done, and I have shared that with the rest of the council in our previous discussions, they didn't really respond yea or nay much with me on that particularly, you know? I guess they didn't have any argument, too much, or they would have argued with my figures. I don't know. Nonetheless, what I see is that the clinic, the Northwest Medical Clinic, would save us close to a million dollars. That's a lot of money. It would give us 60% more square footage to grow, to lease, to be income producer, whatever. Those are two really major facts for me to deal with. It is certainly quite a bit cheaper by square foot. The numbers I have used to come up is $78. Those are subject to evaluation for, but still, you know, the, it is the area, really Popper Bluff is growing in. It's where the hospital is moving out, it has moved in that direction, schools, Eight Points, and it certainly has room to grow. So, while I am not opposed to, to downtown, when I look at it on what's the best value for the dollars spent for the taxpayers, I feel like that's the best one.
Thank you.
Hi, do you have mine? Ten minutes out.
No, I don't think you have yet.
Just sitting out there and hearing the numbers, I wasn't going to bring this up, but now that I'm hearing it, so the difference is approximately $998,089, whatever.
My figures are 985, but those are subject to...
So, nine, let's say $900,000 difference. So, does that include the destruction of this building? The demolition of this building? It does?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it does.
I don't mind it, sir. I don't think so. Or at least in the, in my thinking, the figures I used.
You could fit it in that number.
He says, no, it's not.
Right.
It does not, but it's the same. You have to tear it down and still have regard.
Yeah, it'd be money spent either way.
Right, so it's money spent either way, so if it's not included in that 985,000 dollars...
Because it washes itself out either way.
You got to tear it down, what are the other jerk?
We got, if we, if we built here, we'd have to tear it down. If we move, we'd have to.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, so the demolition in the square footage of a new one here is not included either?
It's just washed out either way.
It's washed either way.
So, I haven't allowed for it myself.
In either of the bids?
Correct.
Okay, because it was my understanding, and if we built here, the demolition was included in that eight million dollar figure, where it was not included in Northwest Medical's seven million dollar figure. Does that make sense? Am I making sense here?
Yeah, you're making sense, but I don't think you have good information.
And all of these are guesstimates. Any of those numbers could shift.
Right, correct.
Well, and there were several square footage prices on if we did a partial renovation on this back portion of the building and, and maybe built new portion over at the parking garage, so, you know, there's a lot of variables either way, so...
Right, so regardless of what you all decide, obviously, if you choose down here, this has to be demolished. If you move north of town, will you, is this still something that you are going to take care of, or are we abandoning it, like we're, we're going to tear it down either way? Okay, so as Phillip stated, which is something that I meant to bring up earlier, in our figure of 985, do we calculate, you know, I've heard the figure be tossed around, you know, we hope this is the City Hall we can be in for 100 years, 50, you know, whatever that year may be. Have we figured into that loss of utilities, property tax in those figures into that?
No.
Because if we do, I feel like we're losing by going to Northwest Medical Center. Phillip made a, a statement. I have my board member, Stephanie Knoppe, here, who is a real estate agent. Since I took the position in January, I've had 16 people call me about investing in downtown Popper Bluff, 16 people. Every single one of them have said, is City Hall moving out of downtown? And I said, I'm unsure at this time. Well, let me know. I've been dealing with, as I've said to multiple of you that were at our Main Street meetings, I've been visiting with a lot of the businesses that are in the downtown district that some feel aren't really part of our goal or a part of our mission or what we hope to see for downtown Popper Bluff. We're working very closely with them, and, you know, it's progressing pretty quickly, and they're actually interested in possibly looking at 44% of Northwest Medical Center and have been in negotiations, or looking at being in negotiation with them. So, to think that choosing Northwest Medical Center because no one else maybe wants to be in there, there is a large group that wants to take 44% of that building, so that we would continue to get that utility tax and that property tax on that building. So, I just want you guys to remember that in making your decision.
I don't remember anybody making a statement that we were going there because no one else wanted it. We were making this statement.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm stating that, that I don't want people to think that it's just going to sit there and we, we aren't making anything off of it because they're, you know, the electric's off and a lot of, you know, the units. We have someone that is willing to take 44% of that building. So, just remember that in your figures, please.
Okay, since we've got some figures going out there, this, this building that we're in here and the one behind where City Hall moved to when we first moved over here, I've had a structural engineer come in and said it's structurally sound, okay? During the feasibility committee, I think they had the figures of $140 a square foot and 170 on some of the building, which one portion was going in. With this being structurally sound, I'm using the police department, you know, the guys did a great job remodeling that building where they're in, spent about $60,000 for 8,000 square foot. This building and the one behind it, first thing, you know, roof is $60,000, and then we've got 17,500 square feet. If you use that same figure of $60,000 for 8,000, we're going to have less than $12 a square foot in this building, and that's allowing 200, that'd be 210,000 dollars to completely remodel this. Use that same $140 a square foot, that comes to 2,450,000, so we've got two and a quarter million left over by not tearing this down and building new here, but remodeling completely, tearing out the inside and making it more energy efficient, just like the new building would. If you go to the 170, it's 2.975 million, so you've got two, two and three-quarter million dollars left to spend on the new building over here that would be energy efficient. To me, that sounds like we're down to about four and a half maybe million for remodeling this, make it look brand new, energy efficient on the inside, and building new over there. So, I don't see where we're getting to the eight million dollars.
Stephanie Knoppe, 1133 County Road, 552, Popper Bluff. As Jerika said, I am a real estate agent, and we have been working with numerous people. I have lots of buyers that are looking at the downtown buildings. I have been spending countless hours and days running numbers with them, trying to help them figure out what we could get the building for, what can we do with the building. We have some people in town that know that I personally would like to have a building downtown and renovate it, and they have actually approached me and said, when you buy that building, I want to put this in. Please let me know as soon as you get it. So, downtown's not dead. No, it's not going to have your J.C. Penney's and your big names, because those are elsewhere, but your downtown is your mom and chop buildings, and you're locally owned, and your locally owned is what supports our community. Hibbits, Academy, I'm grateful that we have all that, because I don't have to drive anywhere, but at the same time, if they're not making enough money, they'll pull out of our community in a heartbeat, because they don't have any ties to here. We need to look at our heritage and protect what we have left. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Wright. I've got Tom's Barber Shop downtown. I've been down there for 40-plus years. I've seen the town go down a whole lot over the years. The best sense is to just go ahead and re-renovate this building here, because you said you're going to have to go renovate anyhow. It will give the people the idea that you actually want to do something for downtown. All these other big businesses, most time they get some sort of a break or get something so that they will come into this area, which is fine, but you need to give downtown a break as well. Give us some incentive. The incentive is for you ones to actually do something downtown. You're always doing something someplace else, so why not do something downtown?
Thank you.
Everyone, I, again, you know, I'm still open on the idea, but I do have one point. We heard this a few years ago when the Black River Coliseum was built. You build a Black River Coliseum, downtown will be revitalized. What happened? I mean, it hasn't been revitalized since we threw 17, 18 million at the Black River Coliseum.
As the current director and as part of Missouri Main Street, she would sit here today and say that was the worst decision we could have ever made for our downtown.
Probably so, but I don't want to make another bad decision, Jerika.
That's not, that's not our decision. That wasn't our committee's decision.
No, I agree with you.
I don't think that the Coliseum necessarily as a whole was a bad idea. I think it was overbuilt. I think it should have been smaller.
It was.
It could have been a great venue for downtown, but that's a totally different subject, and I understand where you're coming from. You don't want to see another large, you know, building put into downtown that people are going to look at and say, why in the world they put all that money in?
That's right, and I, and I'm just being stupid.
But I feel like an event center is a little different, where we have four employees maybe working, six employees working daily, than our City Hall where we have much more than that, so...
Twenty-five, it's not that much more.
With the police department and City Hall and court.
Well, that would be more, you're right on that.
So, and when you say, you know, it's not really an economic benefit, maybe it's not, but to our local business owners in downtown Popper Bluff, it is an economic benefit for them, because when you pull out, that's maybe 40 people that might eat at Myrtle's or that might eat at Jim and Jerry's or might go get their haircut on their lunch at Tom's.
I still think they're, they're still going to go to these, these places of business if they want to go there, whether it's at Northwest Medical or downtown. That's how I feel about it.
Okay.
But I'm not saying that the downtown is a bad choice. I don't even know if it's a good choice right now. I still have to, and I don't really have solid numbers, and it's got a great number of head and...
I know, he's got like cents over there for us.
He's got like a massive calculator in his brain when it comes to numbers, better than me, but I don't see it in front of me on a piece of paper.
Right.
And so, I'd like to see that. I want to make a solid decision from a financial standpoint, not an emotional standpoint, and make sure that we're doing the right thing, not just for downtown Popper Bluff, not necessarily for North Popper Bluff, but for the whole city as a whole. I think we, as a city, have gone and done some harebrained things like the Black River Coliseum, where we cost ourselves a lot of money, and we could have done it better for half the cost.
That's right.
And I want to make sure that when we make our decision on this City Hall, that everybody in Popper Bluff, I'm sure we're, you know what, when I got in here, I know I'm going to upset 50% of the people 100% of the time.
That's how it goes.
All right? I got that with everybody that, that's about City Hall and City Council. But I want to make an informed decision. I don't want to make an emotional decision.
Right.
And until I get numbers from somebody, I don't know what's a good decision.
Well, we're not here, and I don't want any of you to think that we're here to attack you and to say like, this better, you know, we hope that you don't just turn your backs. That is how we feel, because that's what I do every day. You know, my goal is to see downtown not become what it was, you know, maybe when you grow up, because that's just not how town, downtowns are anymore, but to see it be better than what it is today, and to not give up on our business owners that do have businesses down there. They see a benefit in City Hall being down here. If they didn't, you know, they, they wouldn't have stayed this long. So, we're, really, I'm here.
I'm grateful for every business downtown. I really am. And it's not like we're going to abandon downtown if we move. We still own this piece of property. It could become something completely different that we're not even aware of yet, that still may be a benefit to the town. What that is, I don't know. I don't have the answer as we speak, but the city will still own this. Who knows? Who knows? It could be an amphitheater, might be a cool idea. I don't know.
So, please figure that number into that, too, okay?
But it could be something else that we could enjoy as a city. I don't know that as of right now.
Well, I just don't want any of you to think that we're attacking this conversation, because we're not.
No, we understand.
We just want you all to know how much we truly care about downtown, and what incentives we think City Hall brings to keeping you here, and that if it is, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars in the long run, you know, utility tax, property tax, and just having property that you already own, instead of going out and purchasing something that's bigger than what you really need, is it really worth it, is the only reason? You know, that's the point we're trying to get across, and we appreciate all of your decisions, no matter if they're against what we would choose or not. We just wanted you to know our thoughts.
Another factor that I think we need to figure into is the timeline, because this has been going on since twenty thirteen, then fourteen, fifteen. Here we are in seventeen, we still haven't done anything. In the meantime, we've rented all these buildings, and that rent continues to go on, and if you make a decision to move here, you're looking at a year and a half to two years to actually be functioning in that new building.
But if you would've whenever I seconded that motion and continued, we would've been moving in next year, Susan.
And, Jerika, my heart's doing the right thing for this city. I really want to, you've been here, you know how hard these decisions are.
I know, I do.
It is not something we take lightly.
It is not, but when people.
And I'm not here to be attacked.
No, well, and I'm not attacking anybody. I'm just saying when people bring up the fact that, well, it's gonna be a year to move into Northwest, but it's gonna be two years to move into downtown.
It can be in thirty days, or sixty days, or ninety days into Northwest. It's that easy to move into it.
It is.
Yes, yes. I'm looking at the timeline, and you can move into there, build this, move back. There's all kinds of possibilities. You've gotta look at the dollars and cents.
I'm not saying that that's absolutely the best option.
Right.
No, but it's, it's an immediate fix.
There's, this extra square footage could be leased to a variety of possibilities, maybe, maybe the county. There's a lot of ancillary buildings around that could possibly be used in the future. There's plenty of land that could be used for, for parking, or whatever, might, maybe motor pool or anything else, but far my concern here, too, and, you know, numbers are important, the money is obviously important, is important, and to use the money and the, and our money is tremendously important, but I kinda feel like we are streetlocked here. I mean, we, we have the, the second street out here, we have sixty highway here, we have a neighborhood here and the river over here. We, once we, if we build here, we are here. We cannot go, we cannot spread out unless we go up. We cannot grow physically.
Okay, I disagree with that. We've got Oak Street right out here that really is useless, and we could easily build between the two buildings on flat land.
That's it, that's it. That area, how are we gonna go over in the library parking lot?
We're not. We've got this whole street here on the top of that parking garage, connect these two together.
Can the.
With that over there and here, we've got the square footage we need now.
If we tire somewhere over here, we would have to buy that, fill us, uh, fill, uh, children's.
Yep, and with the figures I gave for remodeling this, we still got, it's one seventy, still got over two million dollars left.
Pay a premium price as we buy.
Yeah, we'd still have over two million dollars left by remodeling this compared to the same price for a new building.
Well, you were all elected to do this job, and, you know, we respect you, no matter what your decision is. Being that I've sat where you all are, I know that money, and Phillip knows more than maybe anybody sitting up there, that numbers was a big thing for myself whenever I was on council, so I totally understand where you're coming from, Susan, and that's the main objective, is that we do know how much money we put into other things, or, you know, decisions we made before that weren't in the best interest of the financial standpoint of the city, and so that's what we wanna look at in this position, too.
And so do we.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
We're all in the same boat with that.
Ms. Fox, I think your time's up now.
Okay.
Probably a little over with both of you.
I think I'm way over. I was just standing there like, ready for someone to convince me.
Felix Baker, thirty-five hundred, Marble Hill Road, Popper Bluff. One of the things, I haven't heard the whole discussion, I know, and I apologize for that, I was working late, but one of the things that I think needs to be considered, and, and again, the same thing happened to this building, you're buying an old hospital building, had a twenty, probably twenty-five year life on it when it was built. I mean, the usage, you know, useful life of that building. You're getting a building now, if you buy the new building, you're buying a used building, your heat and air, all those other renovations, you're gonna have to go through all of those to do the same thing, you're gonna build new. If you can tear this down, not tear it maybe all down, but put a lot of it back new, your cost, even though it may be a few hundred thousand dollars difference, it's new.
You're pushing a little, a few.
Well, whatever it is.
You used the word few.
But, but you don't have to replace your heat and, I mean, your heat and air is new, should have a few years' life on, I mean, and all those out there, it is my understanding that that, that building had, the useful life is pretty used. You know, and it's gonna have, take a lot of repairs, not only to buy it, but to do the repairs, and then you're gonna have to update it to, to fix it to be what you need. And I know you all have considered that, but on the other hand, I just wanna make sure that you have considered it and, and thought about, I, I, I'm not saying it's a bad piece of property, it's a great piece of property, but, but you're gonna do the same thi, if you don't do any better there than you did here, we're gonna be in bad shape, guys, and I would like to see you stay downtown. I, I agree with those figures. I've been in the building business most of my life, and I'll guarantee you, you can renovate cheaper than you can go out there and buy another building and renovate it. Time may be a factor, but time is not always the same, same thing. Space, how long has this been a useful building down here?
Twenty-six years.
Okay. It's got another usable lifespan, probably that if it's renovated, and renovation, and renovation will make it work, but had a roof on it and some other updates and some of the, I know there's a lot of repairs and lots of things that can be done, but that's still, I guarantee, can be done cheaper than going out there and changing that, the renovation of that building's gonna be extensive, too.
And it's always been an office building, it's never been a hospital.
Pardon?
That building's always been an office building, never been a hospital.
Well, not a hospital, but a medical building.
But it's always been a medical building.
But it's got a useful, but it's got a useful life still, and it was built with a useful life.
Yes.
And, and that lifespan is nearing its end.
And very well maintained.
And this one ended a long time.
This one ended a long, I don't disagree. So, just consider it, that's all I'm asking, is, is to, it is important, and sometimes money's important, sometimes other things, but you've gotta look at the money, I understand that, I'm in business, but, but this, I think, can be renovated. Personally, I think this one can be renovated cheaper, not time-wise maybe, but cheaper than you can buy that one and renovate it to make your needs used. And we've got, and now, like I said, there's plenty of space over here for expansion. I'm sure these houses next door over here, if you really needed it, they're not that expensive, you know, I mean, they're, they're cost, but it's not expensive as some other properties should you need that space. Plenty of space here to expand it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Beverly Roach, two eleven, County Road four four one six, alias four eleven buying. We're just curious if this is such an important matter, and this has gone on since August of last year, which I remember watching that council meeting, is it not important enough to table it and do like some of the others that you have done, and invite more input to be put into it, maybe have some citizen meetings or something, to where a town hall meeting or something, to where people can actually come? This what never was, I guess, introduced to the public. It was stated they were looking at other options. It never said anywhere or anything about that, so this might be an idea.
It might understand this is just a workshop item tonight, anyway.
Okay, as he was talking about the sales tax on the internet, I for one think we need the sales tax on the internet, but if you take and start listening to some of these big companies, the internet is hurting them as well. These big box stores have just about run their gamut. Some of them are gonna be closing, and when they start closing, they're gonna start looking for other places to go that they don't have all the room that they have to heat and cool, don't have this big of facilities. Now, I know that sounds a little strange, but you just stop and think. You hear about Sears, how it's going down, Kmart's going down, Walmarts has went down, they're all going down. Now, these were the biggest ones that were around, and the reason for a lot of it is because of the internet sales. If you can get some of these mom and pop shops downtown, some of them will end up working with part of the internet, and you will get some tax money that-a-way, whereas of now, you're getting none. And hopefully, people will wake up and realize that the cities need the tax money, and pass it to next time. But until then, we're gonna have to deal with what we've got, and most of that's gonna be mom and pop shops, small ones, that can deal with that stuff. Big, these big stores can't deal with it anymore. It's too many millions of dollars.
Thank you. You all gave us a lot of information, and we appreciate it. A lot of information for us to look at and discuss amongst ourselves, and I don't know what, we'll have another workshop meeting or how it'll go, but we should appreciate all y'all coming. Moving on to item E, the City Council will discuss the co-mingling of municipal utilities funds with other city funds.
Yes, we don't have a proposed ordinance, but this ordinance would prevent a co-mingling of funds from utilities into general fund or any other funds, so the utility funds would be strictly used for utilities. The only way you could use utility funds for possibly a shortfall in general fund would have to come from a vote of the City Council. I know there's always been a fear of, I guess, robbing the utility fund to help general fund, which means utility fund would have to raise electric rates, water and sewer rates, in order to overcome that, and I think Mr. Mayor was the one that wanted this item on the agenda, but.
Has this been a problem in the past?
No, there's always, there's always been talk of it over the years, but it's, I mean, it's never happened, it's.
And so, now, if you need to use funds of utilities, the city manager has the discretion to move it?
No, I still think it would have to come from a vote of the City Council.
Then, what changes?
It, there would simply be an ordinance stating that, which there's really not right now.
And the utilities wouldn't necessarily have to raise unless they were short.
Correct.
So, we wanna be clear of that, 'cause we've borrowed money from them before and paid back without them having to raise.
Yes, that's correct.
So, that needs to be clarified.
Yes, they, I think they would be able to and willing if we needed it and they had it.
It's all city money.
Yeah.
I think for me, the difference between the two, though, one is taxpayer money once we get into the general fund, the other one is rate payer money.
Right.
There's not a taxes on, associated with the utilities. It's all what you pay in from utility rate. So, for me, it's just from a general accounting standpoint, it's good to have a situation where we have stated that the municipal's utilities fund, since it's a rate payer fund and it's an enterprise fund to begin with, needs to be over here and not touched, and then the City Council or the city money over here as a taxpayer money is separate, and it needs to be stated that way in some kind of ordinance.
But that's the way it's always been.
It's the way it's certainly functioned through the years.
It already functioned.
It's always functioned that way. I mean, utilities has a whole separate set of books, a separate accounting system than the city does.
Separate accountant.
Separate accountant, yes, that's true.
I mean, it's very separate now.
But the one part about it, and I'll be honest with you, the one part about it was the city manager, prior to Mark coming on, seemed like he really wanted to grab that money, and this is just a protection.
But wouldn't it still take a vote of the council?
That, we had, it's, it's just rules and regulations that we can't touch it.
But, but wouldn't it still take a vote of the council, so the city manager could not move that money without a vote of the council?
I believe it would.
You also, you also had a point there, though, where the council kind of was in favor of taking that money, and so this just protects council, the city manager, and everybody else from taking it by you having a co-mingling of funds separate, to just don't do it.
And I would like to see, I would like to look at that ordinance before we make a decision on it. I mean, we would, we would wanna read that as well.
Sure.
So, do you wanna, motion to workshop this again at the next meeting, or?
Well, it's hard to vote on something when you're not reading what it's gonna say. I'm sorry, but that's what I've had trouble with all night.
I agree with that, Susan. Come up with a draft and let's see.
I think we should have a draft before we do something.
Just a draft of the ordinance.
All right. So, do you want it on workshop and voting, or just workshop?
I think for this, we just need to workshop it, and then we vote it at the end of September. It's not anything that's a burning tree or anything.
We trust Mark.
No, it's not.
We just need to make a decision before he leaves.
Sure.
And it's not May.
Okay, the motion then to move this on to next workshop, September the fifth, and have a written policy to look at.
I agree. So, move, first motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action required items, Bill number eight zero one six, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the sale of a thirty by fifty workshop storage building owned by the city and located on Roxy Road.
Move for first reading of Bill number eight zero one six by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the sale and removal of a thirty-foot by fifty-foot storage building located on Roxy Road and owned by the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading of Bill number eight zero one six by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading of Bill eight zero one six, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the sale and removal of a thirty-foot by fifty-foot storage building located on Roxy Road and owned by the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption of Bill number eight zero one six.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number eight zero one six has passed. Bill number eight zero one seven, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the Shelby Road Phase Two project.
Move for first reading, Bill number eight zero one seven, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading of Bill eight zero one seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the Shelby Road Phase Two project for the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading of Bill number eight zero one seven by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the construction of the Shelby Road Phase Two project for the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption of Bill number eight zero one seven.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number eight-zero-one-seven has passed. Bill number eight-zero-one-eight, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter two-ten, entitled offenses relative to conceal and carry and paintball guns.
Make a motion to first reading of bill number eight-zero-one-eight by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Poplar Bluff Code of Ordinances, Chapter two-ten, eight-forty, of the Code of Ordinances entitled offenses, and Chapter two-fifteen of the code entitled nuisances.
Request for second reading of bill number eight-zero-one-eight by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the Poplar Bluff Code of Ordinances, Chapter two-ten, eight-forty, of the Code of Ordinances entitled offenses, and Chapter two-fifteen of the code entitled nuisances.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have discussion on that. I, I feel like that the paint guns and the conceal and carry should not be in the same ordinance. I wonder if we could revisit that. Also, when you read the paint gun section, it appears to be that any citizen could have a paint gun fight in their front yard. I feel like it is not reading properly before we approve this amendment, of this ordinance.
The motion that we tabled, uh, leave that to workshop.
There really wasn't any discussion last week, or the two meetings, the meeting before this, uh, the chief addressed the, uh, concealed carry, but didn't address the paintball, and nobody asked any questions.
But then when we read it in our packet, it didn't read like I thought it was coming across.
Right, and relative to a, you know, a paintball facility in the city limits, uh, I mean, I feel like that's something that should go before planning, zoning, with a conditional use permit, and then come to council. Uh, yeah, my recommendation that be two separate ordinances.
Do we have a paintball facility within the city? Because I got a couple of phone calls today saying that they thought we did have.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I think there's some laser tag, and maybe thinking that's it.
And there's an interest of someone starting one, but it's, wouldn't be within our ordinances right now.
First, the Mayor Proton McVeigh thinks all that these two should be separated, and Mr. Massingham agreed, and a motion's been made then to send this back to workshop on September the fifth, separating the two and making clarification on the paintball ordinance.
I agree with that.
Some kind of parliamentary procedure since we've already...
No, I mean, you can, you can, I, I think the motion is to move it to the nine-sixth meeting for further workshop.
I just want to make sure we did it right.
And, and I understand the concern. From, from a drafting point of view, there, there's not anything wrong with including Chapter two-ten revisions and Chapter two-fifteen revisions. However, uh, as pointed out, uh, they are two separate subjects, and there wasn't any discussion. I, I actually think there were some folks here at the last meeting uh, that wanted to discuss it, at least I was told that after the fact, and they were either too timid to stand up, or we didn't give them an opportunity, uh, to do that. Um, currently, you have no ordinances that restrict paintball in any fashion whatsoever. Uh, this order at least is the first step. And then the other part of that, though, and I think it's well advised, uh, to, uh, to further review, uh, and to, uh, discuss this, is that we don't have anything in this, and by the way, this ordinance that is, uh, included in here, section two-fifteen, nine-thirty, it, it's a model MML ordinance that has been adopted by other cities. So there's not anything, uh, unusual about that. But, uh, there's also not anything, uh, that's included, and it doesn't have to be. Um, you could do it separately, or you could include it in this, or you could just not do anything at all. There's not anything within your zoning laws and your conditional use laws that would restrict areas in town where, you know, whether it be, eh, industrial, uh, commercial, uh, residential, uh, there are no restrictions currently. Um, so you probably need to have your, uh, city planner look at that and make some recommendations, uh, while we're revisiting this and discussing it further, to see if you want to include some restrictions, some conditional use restrictions within your, uh, within your planning and zoning laws.
Okay, so then the motion is to table this item till September fifth workshop for additional discussion. Is that correct?
Yes. I make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a roll call on that. Okay, the item will be re-discussed on September the fifth. Bill number eight-zero-one-nine, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative purchase agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council relative to an inter-local contract for purchases.
Motion to first reading for bill number eight-zero-one-nine.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council relative to inter-local contracts for purchases.
Move for second reading, bill number eight-zero-one-nine by caption only.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council relative to inter-local contracts for purchases.
Mr. Mayor, I have discussion again, um, actually for the city manager. Would this have anything to do with the purchasing policy? Should we withhold on this until we get through the purchasing policy?
Well, the purchasing policy actually says if, uh, if something can be bought that matches state price or lower than state pri- or state contract price, then, uh, they're able to do that.
So, we're good with this going through?
I think so, I mean...
I just, since that was on the agenda tonight, just wanted to clarify and make sure.
And, you know, I know it sounds odd, Houston-Galveston, Texas area. There's a lot of cities in this, uh, group that use this service, so, a lot of cities in Missouri.
There's actually over a hundred cities within the state of Missouri that use it. It's a huge...
As long as it's not a conflict with our purchasing policy, was what I was, not, not having to use it, but whether it would be a conflict.
It does not conflict with your current or your past purchasing, uh, requirements. It just, on those purchases that are allowable, uh, they can go to this cooperative, and if they can beat, um, the state bid, uh, then they can purchase from there rather than off of the state bid or to, to bid it.
And does local come in play with that any?
I think it would. I mean, uh, if, you know, they're falling that percentage range, I think they'd, they would have to buy local, so...
With that, I make motion to adopt bill number eight-zero-one-nine.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number eight-zero-one-nine has passed. Bill number eight-zero-two-zero, the city council will take action on an ordinance providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January one, two thousand seventeen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for the following purposes: general revenue, police and firemen's pension fund to be levied and collected as to all property in the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Motion for first reading on bill number eight-zero-two-zero.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January first, two thousand seventeen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for the following purposes: one, general revenue; two, police and firemen's pension fund, to be levied and collected as to all property in the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Move for second reading of bill number eight-zero-two-zero by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of property taxes for the year beginning January one, two thousand seventeen, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for the following purposes: one, general revenue; two, police and firemen's pension fund, to be levied and collected as to all property in the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, both personal and real, except household goods located in private homes.
Move for adoption of bill number eight-zero-two-zero.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number eight-zero-two-zero has passed. Bill number eight-zero-two-one, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for professional demolition and land clearance services and asbestos abatement services relative to the flood buyout project.
Move for first reading of bill number eight-zero-two-one by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Dornan Demolition Company for demolition services for the flood buyout project.
Move for second reading of bill number eight-zero-two-one by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid from Dornan Demolition Company for demolition services for the flood buyout project.
Move for adoption of bill number eight-zero-two-one.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, item double G, the city council and city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting, which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meeting law, section six-ten-point-oh-two-one-point-one-point-two-point-three-point-nine-point-eleven-point-twelve-point-thirteen-point-fourteen revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Massingham?
Uh, the only thing I really have is, uh, as most of you or all of you probably know, we had an automobile accident last week with, uh, five utility workers, and, uh, thank the Lord, they came out of it with bruises and a few cuts. It could have been